Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 5th meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. Nice to have everyone here on this beautiful fall evening. I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Yes, Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord is expected. Mayor Dixon.
Here.
Mayor Protem and Secretary Bavacqua.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Gasson. I know is here. Commissioner Hauser.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Stone.
Here.
We have a call.
We have a call. We're ready to proceed. At this time, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask Commissioner Stone to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Excellent, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
It's America.
To the Republic.
To the Republic.
And.
Which is stand.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Invisible with liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. David Gasson, can you hear us? We know you're there. Okay. Just some comments for the benefit of the commissioners and the public who's watching. As you know, last Friday, the Michigan State Supreme Court overturned the law that the governor had been using to issue the many executive orders. Among them was the order that public meetings such as this one could not no longer be held in person, but it also gave us the opportunity to vote virtually as we've been doing here, and those votes counted. There's confusion tonight in terms of the actual impact of what the Supreme Court did, and I think that'll get worked out by our next meeting, but the city fathers, steward, and the administration decided that it was best until things are clarified that we just stay on the path we've been on, and that is meeting virtually, voting virtually. And again, you'll see a number, a phone number displayed at the bottom of the screen that allows any member of the public who's watching to call in. You'll reach our technical folks, and they'll actually connect you into the meeting. So we won't be able to see you visually, but we will be able to hear you, and we'd love to have anyone call that has questions or comments, concerns or input, or anything that's on the agenda tonight. At this point, I'm going to open the public comment period. Sianna, I'm going to ask, do you have anything in writing or anyone online waiting to talk to us tonight?
Yes, I actually just received an email approximately 10 minutes ago. This is from Mr. William Frye. I apologize, he did not provide his address. However, the email states, "Could you ask a question of the Planning Commission this evening regarding the large footprint of some of the homes in downtown Rochester? We have tried to get information before on developers and buildings meeting the square footage building code criteria, and it is not very easy to get this information. There is a new home built on the 300 block of Oak that appears to exceed the requirement that not more than 30% of the lot is built upon. My question is, how can residents get this information easily, and what is the process of who oversees that these mandates are followed by the book? It has been rumored in the past that exceptions are made for builders and developers. There should be a very transparent process to oversee that building codes are being followed right from the beginning of the project, not after when a lawsuit is necessary. How can we get this information to find out if the new residence next to the 319 Oak is within the 30% or less of the lot size code requirement? Also, it appears to be very close to the side lot. Maintaining the setbacks and building code restrictions should be a priority for the city of Rochester. When we wanted to do a building project on our lot, see the pest building inspector gave us guidelines in these terms of setbacks, et cetera, that do not seem to be universally applied to all projects in our neighborhood. He also said that there are no building codes and requirements available in writing, that we just had to take his word for it. This seems very problematic in terms of laws and requirements and allows way too much room for inconsistencies in the development of the city of Rochester. Thank you."
Mr. Frye for your... Nick, one second. Thank you, Mr. Frye, for your input. If you're watching, you can also feel free to call in. Speaking from the Planning Commission and for the commissioners, the code is very clearly and succinctly written in terms of how houses are built in the city, including infill or houses where an original home may have been removed. That is all under the auspices of Nick Banda, who's our deputy city manager and also the director of community development. So he's the one you'll want to call, and he's available right now, so I'm going to turn the floor over to him for a minute and let him respond.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Frye, please, if you are listening, please call me. We are as transparent as ever. Nothing's ever changed in the ordinance. There is not a home in this city, as documented, that is over 30%. We've gone over this with lasers, with surveyors, with every builder. I was just at the house with the building official on Oak last Thursday. That is the largest lot that was left in the city, is exactly at 30%, including the garage covered porch and the rear, where the garage is in the rear. I know a lot of people question the former city building inspector about the 30%. We would literally go out there with folks, take the survey out there, measure it with them, and prove it. We've never, we haven't had to ask anybody to reduce the footprint of their property after it was built. They have to have certified surveyors go out. We've actually checked with our own engineers, so we take it very seriously. It's never wishy-washy. It's like the chairman said, it's in black and white. It's on the plans. We'd be glad to scan in those building plans, the site plan, anyway. We can't give you the building. We would be glad to give you the site plan to show you exact dimensions. That is a five-foot setback on the side yard. It is compliant. And the homes are that large, I understand what it looks like, but just because he put that, Mr. Frye put that in writing, for anybody else listening, doesn't mean that he's right, to be honest with you. So we'd be glad to back it up, show them paperwork, anybody get that documentation. We take it very seriously.
Nick, what's a phone number that Mr. Frye can reach you at directly?
Give you my cell, 248-909-4072. Anytime.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Frye, thank you very much for taking the time to investigate that on your own, writing that memo and sending it in. And after you talk to Nick, if you want to talk with us further, feel free to either call in, or perhaps by then we'll be back in public meeting format. Thank you very much. Sianna, anyone else waiting?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. We'll go to the next item, number four, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 24th, 2020. I ask the commissioners if you've had time to review the minutes, and if so, do you have any additions, deletions, corrections, or a motion?
I'll move to minutes. Come on.
Mr. Lord has moved to approve the minutes. Is there support?
Support.
Who supported?
Support.
Mayor. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? The roll call, please.
Lord?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yeah.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you very much. Item number five, public hearing with the consideration of a site plan for an addition to the Pfizer Building that houses a new water for injection, WFI Still, to be located at 1200 Parkdale Avenue.
We have reviewed the request from Pfizer to build a 714 square foot, single-story addition to their existing complex to accommodate a new water for injection still. The site is located on the east side of Park Pharmaceuticals, on the south side of Parkdale, and is zoned RP, which is the research park district. The proposed use is permitted as a principal use in the district, which allows for research, testing, development, manufacturing, packaging, and warehouse for pharmaceuticals. With regard to height and placement, the addition is located on the southeast corner of the main building. At the last preliminary hearing, I asked the applicant to provide an overall plan for the site, so we have an idea of where exactly this addition is located. And this is on the southeast corner of the main building, and it would be partially visible from Parkdale too. The existing building is single and two-story stall, and the proposed addition is connecting to a single-story structure.
Can you put the site plan up?
I'm sorry?
Can you put the site plan up?
Apologize, I shifted my screens around and...
Vidia, this is Chad Rainey, I'm the design project manager with CRB. I have it available right now, if you'd like me to share my screen.
Please do, sir.
Go ahead, Chad, just put it up there, because I have to move to screens.
Should be able to see it?
Yes. Yes, that looks good. So the proposed addition, as you can see on this site plan, is at the southeast corner of the main building, and you would be able to see it from Parkdale Drive only at an angle, a small portion of it. The height of the structure is within the maximum permitted for the RP district. It's only a single-story addition, so it's well within the height requirement. Now, the proposed addition is at the dead end of an existing access drive. They are eliminating a portion of the concrete area. However, as you can see, there is enough pavement area for vehicles to do a clean turnaround and go back down the main access drive to the south of the site. The overhead door on the south side of the building that's being proposed is intended to facilitate only four truck access, does not intended for semis or larger vehicles, there's more than adequate room for those turn movements. The site has an existing sidewalk which will be taken out because of the proposed addition, and the applicant is making up for it by putting in a new five-foot wide sidewalk connection on the east, northeast of the proposed addition, and it will connect to the existing network of sidewalks on the site. Based on off-street parking calculations, the proposed addition will require one additional space. This set of plans does not have parking calculations on it, but the applicant had submitted for a larger warehouse project in 2008, and we have more than enough data on the site to determine that they have more than the required number of parking spaces on the site. This one space is easily accommodated. As to architecture, at the last meeting, we had asked the applicant to provide line of site diagrams, so we know what exactly the structure is going to look like from Parkdale. The addition is to be constructed of metal panel walls. Chad, if you could just scroll to that particular sheet, which shows what this addition is going to look like? So it is pretty much designed to match the existing building, metal panel walls, and as you can see, it's sort of, it's going to get integrated into the existing building, and only in one angle you will actually be able to see it. And at the previous meeting, the applicant had stated that there is going to be no rooftop equipment visible on top. It's going to be placed at the lower level of this. So it's pretty much an industrial building integrated into the existing site, so it is acceptable. For the most part, it's completely covered by existing tree cover. Any mechanical equipment is going to be placed at a lower level and not visible from any public rights of way. There is no additional signage proposed for this proposal. With regard to lighting, the plan does propose a couple of wall-mounted light fixtures. Now manufacturers have been provided for two different fixtures. One is called the D Series, and the other is a TWH LED. Now, the D Series does meet our ordinance requirements for a downward-directed and shielded light, and the LED does not. I just want to make sure that when they're installing the fixture, it should be the D Series type of fixture, so that the light is downward-directed and shielded, because the glare from the light will be visible at a distance. No trees are going to be removed as part of this proposal, since it's an existing concrete drive. The existing trash dumpster location is not being authored by this proposal. So overall, it's a small addition, but a vital component to the pharmaceutical processing within the building itself, and it will just add on to the existing site, which Pfizer has done over time. They have added on as needed buildings to their existing house. Based upon our review of the proposal, it would be a recommendation that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval, Pfizer, for the construction of the new WFI Still addition, subject to the condition that they use only the D Series wall-mounted light fixtures. I would be happy to answer any questions you like.
Thank you. Any questions for the planner?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. John Goring, I'm 408 Roundview, I'm the, probably the only property that can actually see that. I'm right up against Parkdale on Roundview Drive, and I am adjacent to the gate where the traffic goes in and out. So I guess my questions would be, taking into account that the lighting is going to be directed downward. I guess my biggest concerns are, will there be any added operational noise? Because, like I said, I'm directly across. I hear every, every time that gate opens and closes, it echoes through my driveway, and I've got a great relationship with the plant manager over there, and he's been great about things, but the noise from that gate, if it's going to be, if this building's going to require more traffic or more operational noise or more lighting, that I, then, those are my concerns.
Dan, what's the noise like that you're hearing? Is it like it needs maintenance, or?
No, no, no. So they have a safety gate. I've been in contact regularly with the plant manager over there through, you know, just being friends in general and knowing common people. But, and he's been great, this summer has been almost no noise whatsoever, but when the gate, when they're not under normal operating, where the gates are open all the time, every time that gate opens and closes, it beeps.
Yes.
Steady annoying beep, and it goes on for about 20 to 25 seconds for the gate to open, and then 20 to 25 seconds for the gate to close, and it happens every time anybody drives in. Like I said, they have been fantastic this summer about keeping the gate open almost the entire summer. And prior to that, they had, he had done a good job of adjusting the times so that it was only from like midnight until 5:30 in the morning, it would go off. But it's, it's my, it's my understanding, some kind of OSHA or something that requires a moving gate like that to have a beeper, but it is, it is annoying as Mr. Smith, I think, was getting ready to.
Yeah. So, so hi, everybody. My name is Chris. Can you guys hear me?
Yes. What's your last name, Chris?
Smith. Christopher Smith. I live two houses down from John, in the sub on Roundview as well. So I'm two houses down, and I hear that gate every time it opens as well, whether I'm in my driveway or in my backyard, we can always hear that gate as well. So my, my questions are similar to John's.
With regard to the sound being generated from this proposed addition, we had raised it at the previous meeting, and the applicant had said that this WFI Still addition is not going to generate any noise that is audible on the outside at all. With regard to the sounds the gate is making, I will definitely defer to the folks from Pfizer to actually answer that, because that is a larger site plan question with regard to, like you said, Mr. Goring, something to do with OSHA requiring backing up vehicles to have regular beeps, or I don't know if something can be adjusted or the volume can be reduced. Chad, would your team be able to answer that?
So we have Lisa Bolander, who's the site engineering manager, on the call right now. Can speak to that?
Yes, I was actually just about to unmute. So I will actually look into that from my side. As it relates to the WFI installation, there will be no impact to additional traffic. This is just an operational change, and actually just will make it more efficient for the process. So this is the first I'm hearing about the gate, but then again, I'm newer to Pfizer. So from my side, I can look into that, and is there an email or somebody you'd like me to follow up with?
Yes. Could you, could you get it to Nick Banda, who you heard a little bit earlier on the, on the call or on the meeting?
Okay. Let me just find a pen, sorry, I'm in my kitchen right now.
Nick is our deputy city manager, and the, the building officials report to him.
Okay. And can you, what is Nick's email address?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's N.Banda, B.A.N.D.A.
Okay.
At RochesterMI.org.
Alrighty.
And your phone number again, Nick?
I, I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention again that this summer has been fantastic, and the plant manager has been very receptive and understanding. It's just a matter of trying to, to, you know, meet his requirements and not annoy our whole neighborhood.
Sure, sure, absolutely. That, that makes sense. You know, since I started, the gate's been open, so I've never even heard that beep, but I can imagine it's disruptive, so.
I have a couple other questions about the building, if I may.
Please do.
So we talked about noise. The other two questions I have is, does it emit any smell or odor, and does it emit any smoke or anything that we would see from like a smoker or something that it might be emitting into the air?
No, the answer is no to both of those.
Okay. Chad, could you tell us exactly what the still is for?
Yes, it's the whiffy still, or water for injection. And basically, it takes city water and purifies it so that it can be used in the process to make the medicine that's manufactured on site, which is injected into the human body.
Arrow, I assume.
Injection, yes, water for injection. Yep.
Okay. No additional employees?
No, this is an, Pfizer has an existing water-for-injection generation system in their building, and this is upgrading and increasing the capacity of that system.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Vidia, I think we're hearing everything we need from you. This is scheduled for a public hearing, so I'm going to take the opportunity here to open this public hearing. Gentlemen, for the record, we have to document that this has been held at a public meeting, and everyone has had an opportunity to review it and speak. So at 7:21, the public hearing is open. We've already heard from a couple of members of the public. Sianna, do you have anyone else who has called in or sent any messages in? Okay. Any other comments that would be, you remain here during the public hearing, does anyone have?
Dennis had a couple.
Go ahead, go ahead, man.
When will construction commence?
Dave Sepo is the Pfizer project manager. Dave, can you answer that question?
Yes, hi, Matt. Dave Sepo here. Currently, it could be as early as December, but most likely it won't be until after the winter, so like late March or April of next year.
Okay. And how many months for the residents, do you anticipate this will last?
That's, I mean, the, the entire construction schedule is not defined yet, but I, you know, I can't imagine it'd be more than, you know, three, four months of constructing the, the building itself.
Okay. Is this a well that goes underground?
The whiffy still, no. It's a piece of equipment that sits on the floor inside that addition.
Okay. So it's something that'll be manufactured elsewhere and delivered here?
Correct.
Okay, that helps. That helps.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's a pretty basic building. The footing's in foundation, and then steel with the metal panels, and then once the shell is constructed, then all the other equipment and everything will be staged inside, and then the rest of the piping and construction on the interior will, will progress.
Okay. Any other questions? So at 7:24, I'm going to declare that the public hearing has been held as required.
Dennis, I had one question. This is Commissioner Clark Martin.
Go ahead, Ben.
Will the road be disrupted at all? As far as traffic?
No, Parkdale Road will not be disrupted at all.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Structurally, are these spread footings?
We're still in the early design phases for this, so I don't know that that's been
The planner has recommended that we grant site plan approval. The required public hearing has been held. I believe all the questions have been answered. Final, final check with Sianna to make sure nobody's waiting in line.
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you. So commissioners, we'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the site plan.
Been moved by the mayor. We have support.
Support.
And who's our supporter?
Clark Martin.
Okay, thanks, Ben. It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? The roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman? Chairman McGee?
Oh, Vidia.
Yes, I just want to clarify with the mayor that the approval is subject to the condition listed in our review letter dated September 28th, 2020.
Absolutely, thank you, Vidia. That's fine. Madam Clerk, go right ahead.
Dixon?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen, and good luck with your project.
Thank you. Everyone have a good evening.
Does that mean you're going to be adding to your product line here, or do we know?
I'm sorry.
I'm wondering if the addition of this equipment means that Pfizer is adding to or modifying the product line at this facility?
No, no, our volume is, is the same, and our products will remain the same. This is just a streamlined efficiency and resiliency project.
Very good, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, have a good night.
All right, the next item is number six, and this goes back to Vidia. This is review and discussion of the existing infill development ordinance. Vidia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, the goal tonight is discussion on the infill development and a recommendation to schedule a public hearing on this amendment. In the last several meetings, Julie presented to you changes to the infill ordinance and edits to the infill ordinance. We separated out issues that have a larger scope and that should be discussed only as part of a master plan discussion, but there are some things that need to be clarified at this time in the zoning ordinance, because the interpretation always raises concerns and confusion. So based upon that, the corrections or amendments we are suggesting to the ordinance at this time are in section 2116. It basically says architectural building features supported by a continuous foundation shall not project into any required yard. Right now, the way the ordinance language is written, neither nor, its use of the English language creates a lot of confusion in interpretation of that. It actually ends up suggesting two different alternatives depending upon which way you're applying the neither and nor.
Vidia, turn your screen. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Turn your screen while you go through the document.
Yes, okay. Can you all see this? Okay. So I'm going through the amendment. Is it visible to everyone, the actual text?
Yes.
Okay. So first correction is that architecture by a continuous foundation shall not project required yard. That makes it very clear that if it is from foundation upwards, it cannot stick into any of the required side yards or front or rear yard. What is required, it cannot. So the item after that clarifies it, a roof overhang inclusive of gutters may project into any required yard up to 18 inches. Instead of stating requirements as negatives, may project not more than, it's easier to say it can project up to 18 inches. So that's basically how the ordinance has always been interpreted and applied in Rochester, but the language was not very clear. So those are the two corrections that Julie and I improved.
Does that mean any required side yard? Is that what that's referring to?
Yes, it's actually any required yard can be the front. Yes, it's actually any required yard can be the front, rear, or the sides. You can have gutters and overhangs, but that can be a maximum of eighteen inches.
Would you put those three terms in parentheses right after that?
Okay, I can do that. Four yards, okay. Then item number seven says architectural building features can be levered from the building wall such as but not limited to bay windows, alcoves, stairwells, chimneys, and the like. May project up to eighteen inches into a front or rear yard setback. Right now, the way the ordinance it says, um, once again, it is not more than, instead of that, we are clearly saying it can be in the front or rear setback up to eighteen inches. And such features cannot exceed, we have kept the rest of the language limiting how much it can be so that you don't have one element overtaking the entire facade. Such building features may project into any required side yard up to eighteen. Once again, we are clarifying that any of the permissible projections shall include all of it, maybe roof overhangs, gutters, your bay windows, your alcoves, if you have stairways, if you have a chimney projection, all of that can project a maximum of up to eighteen inches. Subsection eight over here, it clarifies in single-family residential district, detached and attached garages shall conform to the standards in section two one zero two. The reason we added this reference in is because section two one zero two has got the actual supplementary district regulations, which includes all the requirements with regard to garages. And then you have these infill standards. It has created confusion in the past when people are looking over here, then they are looking over there. I would like to suggest a correction to subsection E. Here it says detached garages on infill development home sites shall be set back not less than five feet from all side and rear lot line. This is actually an error in the ordinance. Several years ago, the planning commission and the city council adopted an amendment where you change detached garages can be located three feet from the rear property line. So you have a section of the ordinance that's allowing for still five feet side yard setback for a detached garage. But it does allow for three feet from the rear yard, and there have been several structures built that way. However, this existing section in the ordinance, which wasn't rescinded or corrected at the time, creates confusion. It sort of makes it look like for infill houses, you have a different standard versus for other single-family homes with detached garages. Say there is an existing dwelling and they are building a new detached garage. They will be allowed to build the detached garage three feet from the rear property line. But if it's a brand new infill house and they want to build a detached garage, they will be required to maintain five feet based on this. So it is uneven standards applied to single-family dwellers. In order to ensure that it matches, I am suggesting that a correction we made subsection B, which I have discussed with Attorney Grant. And he said, yes, that's a correction we need to make so that they're not holding single-family homes that are building detached garages to different standards. That is a correction that we are suggesting. And subsections eleven and twelve are the two issues the planning commission had discussed. Egress window wells may project into any required side yard, provided they are setback a minimum of two feet from any side or rear property line. The setback requirement was determined based upon discussions with the building official, checking the state building codes, and also the fire official to make sure that it meets their requirements for public safety and access. Egress windows are not allowed into a required front yard. However, we had concerns that it say it is dark and police officer needs to go down the side of a house between two buildings and you have this window well, you're going to fall into it. So we added requirements saying egress window wells inside yards shall be provided with a permanently anchored cover. And egress window wells shall comply with all applicable building code. I want the planning commission's insight. If you are clear on what a permanently anchored cover means. What we intend to convey through a permanently anchored cover is something that is attached to the foundation wall of the house, and it is a cover that you can push open. It's like a flip lid. You can push it open from inside and you can also open it from the outside. The reason we call it permanently anchored is so that it's not just a plastic shield get on top that if you have strong winds, it's not going into the backyard. So that's what permanently anchored means. It doesn't mean anchored on all four sides and sealed. Basically anchored so it doesn't fly off. You can still open it and meet building code. That that's the intent of the language. I want to be sure that that's what it's coming to all the commissioners because earlier this evening I was discussing it with Nick and Nick had some concerns that permanently anchored makes it sound like you're asking them to bolt the whole thing down. That's that's not what we are trying to do. So I want your feedback whether you're clear in understanding what that requirement is. And finally, sunken padios may project into any required side or rear yard, provided they are setback a minimum of three feet from any side or rear property line, cannot project into white front yard. So the integrity of the front yard is being maintained of all required front yard, from all projections of any kind. So any of the things that we usually see in all these homes, egress windows, overhangs, uh, sunken padios or the larger ones are being permitted to be placed within the side and the rear yards up to a certain distance and couple of things with limitations in the front yard. So other than the egress windows and the sunken padios, which are new regulations, the rest of the changes in the text that you see before you tonight is basically just clarifying language so that it matches how it has historically been interpreted and applied by the building department in Rochester. So the only correction that I will be making to this draft amendment is eight B, where I shall be stating it as detached garages on infill development home sites shall be set back not less than five feet from the side lot line and three feet from the rear lot lot. That's the only correction I'll be making here. Otherwise, this is the ordinance that is before you tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And what we are hoping for you is to place this at your next meeting for a public here.
Any questions for Vidya?
Yes, I have one. Uh, maybe a suggestion. When you talk about the egress windows and the permanently anchored,
Uh huh.
Would adding something like hinged for access there make a little more sense in terms of clarity?
Uh, okay, I think I will do that because I think even Nick and Jeff got confused, you know, because they said it sort of reads like you're asking for the whole thing to be bolted down, which is not okay. I will, I will probably use a different choice of words to make that more clear. So it's only one side is fixed and it's open up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else for Vidya?
Do you include a graphic representation for eleven A?
I would be happy to do that. I can, in fact, I actually, um, one second, let me just pull up a couple of pictures I downloaded earlier this um, don't know if I'll be able to share those just let me see.
You you email it to me this afternoon, so maybe get it off of that.
Yes, that's that's what I'm I'm going to stop sharing this and I'm going to see if I can just when I always think I've figured out something, if then it's going to show, hang on for one second. I'm going to actually open up the entire.
While you're looking for that, I think it'd be helpful to have drawings or sketches for all of these. It sure helps clarify it. I think that will help the building officials frankly in in enforcement, quickly explaining what is and it is not permitted. I I just sent it right back to you, Vidya, with the attachments.
Yes, thank you, Nick. My my problem is that when I try to share it, it's pulling up all my personal pictures onto the main screen.
Got it.
So I'm trying to figure out how to share this. Hang on one second. I I should be able to share from, aha, I got it. Can everyone see it now?
There you go.
So this would be sort of a cover. This is just a basic example. You get much more fancier ones. But it basically is bolted or anchored to the wall so that you can, you know, it can be pushed open from inside. You can also lift the latch and lift it open from the outside. But it'll prevent in case and the police officer or a fireman is running down the side yard, they can step on this and they won't like break their leg or land inside the window.
Did you hear my comment that I'd suggest uh, succinct drawings with each one of these, uh, sections?
I can do that. Add illustrations.
I'm having trouble understanding number eight.
Let's go back. Okay, in single-family districts, detached and attached garages shall conform to the standards of section two one zero two. So this particular ordinance that we are amending is in section two one one six. This deals only with infill homes. Now, section two one zero two deals with accessory structures for the whole city. So you basically have a different set of standards for infill homes and different set of standards for all other single-family dwellers. Which is fine because the intent was to control and regulate how infill homes go in. The only problem over here with regard to the garage requirements is, which is why the planning commission had changed it a few years ago in the accessory structure section is lots of detached garages based upon the available rear yard being placed three feet from the rear property line, and the planning commission and the city council found that acceptable. But that change was made only to the section for all existing single-family homes. So say there is a home that was built ten years ago and they want a new detached garage. Building official will look at section two one zero two and allow them to put their garage three feet from the rear property line. Tomorrow, somebody comes and buys an infill lot on, say, Wilkans. They demolish the house and they want to build a brand new home and a detached garage. Now suddenly their detached garage has to be five feet from the rear property line. That is an inequitable application of the ordinance rules. Both are detached garages, both serve single-family homes. Both have to be the maximum building height requirement, both have to conform to the building lot coverage, yet one is being subjected to a larger setback than another. That is a conflict between two points.
And this
Eight A, it says the front wall of an attached front entry garage which faces the street has to be
This is
back from the front wall of the dwelling to which it attaches. What does that mean? Four feet into the rectangle of the house?
Yes, if you look at section two one zero two, when you adopted that ordinance, I put illustrations in that section. It actually shows how it looks if you do that. The reason we reference it here is once again, we are trying to tie two one zero two and two one one six with regard to garage. This illustration is already in the ordinance. I can copy the illustration from that section and put it here on.
I think that would be helpful. Yeah.
Yes, I I will add illustrations or wherever I think there might be a question of how to perceive it. So it makes it easier for somebody referencing ordinance on it.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for Vidya?
This is Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is Commissioner King. I just had a quick question about number six, the roof overhang. Um, I've seen a couple, um, of really nicely done kind of modern style homes that have hip roofs. I don't know if anybody, any of the commissioners or architects, what the typical overhang is for that style. I just want to make sure that we're not limiting, you know, something um, or not taking into consideration.
Commissioner Gasson is an architect. However, before he answers, I just want to clarify that this is not regulating the roof design, Commissioner King. This is it can still be a hip roof. It just says that the gutters or the overhangs that are at the edge of the roof cannot project more than eighteen eighteen inches. The reason we put in eighteen inches, it is pretty standard in most communities so that when you have heavy rains and there is a water runoff from the roofs, the water is not falling into onto your property lines, common shared property lines, or creating like wet spots affecting your houses, which freeze in winter. So that's basically, it's not going to prevent its roof design or any architectural elements. But if Commissioner Gasson wants to offer some insights that he
Ms. Chairman, David Gasson. I would I would comment that
Go ahead.
It is somewhat limiting for someone in a design role for a house. And I I wouldn't use that as a reason to make it different than the eighteen inches. You just have to work within, you know, the regulations there. But I would say that that number isn't a building module number, which would be a little bit odd, especially since it includes and states inclusive of gutters. That just makes it a really weird variable. But I thought about it before the meeting a couple times with bringing it up, but thinking you just have to work within that number based on, you know, if Vidya's research says that the water issue is that houses meet the ground. I guess I'd let that be the the way you make that determination, whether sixteen inches or twenty inches. I I don't think that's a big deal from an architectural standpoint.
What were you thinking, like eighteen inches plus the gutter?
I was thinking sixteen inches since that's a normal building module plus the gutter, which is a variable. So that would probably put you closer to twenty inches, twenty two inches, maybe. It's just easier to be on a building module when you think about rafter spacing or joy spacing to project that's usually sixteen inches. That that's what I was thinking.
Vidya, maybe you could consider that?
Definitely. I think Commissioner Gasson makes a good point, but the recommendation for eighteen inches came after extensive investigation by myself and Julie into other communities. Uh, I looked specifically at many of the lakeside communities. As you know, if you go up Orchard Lake or we go up to Lake Orion, um, we have very small lots. I mean, very smaller than anything we have at the city. And some of the homes that have been built, they are million dollar homes, and the architects are just amazing. It's amazing what they can pack in within that lot coverage onto those little lots and eighteen inches. I mean, it's creative roof design. They managed to get the gutters and the overhangs, everything in. So, um, unless these are like quarter acre lots or half acre lots, I have not seen the allowable projections from roof overhangs exceed that is typically for something you might see on the eastern side of the city where you have the much larger lots. But for these smaller lots that are on the west side of the city, um, eighteen inches would be substantial so that it doesn't create if if you see twenty inches, say, the setback between two buildings is five feet, five feet, you have ten feet. And now you have literally out of the ten feet, you have projections up over it's it's like creating a true kind of vision on top also. So our eighteen inches was based on research of other communities with similar lot sizes. I'll definitely take a look at building modules to see if there is any reasoning behind maybe increasing it to sixteen or twenty. But, uh, for now, I'll leave it at eighteen. If I find more information, I'll definitely get that back to you.
Really, what it might come down to is that certain styles of homes just do not go on these small lots, like it occurs to me like a prairie style home with the, uh, really deep, uh, overhangs. That's kind of classic, but they probably wouldn't fit here. Anyone else?
Chairman, I I had a few other questions.
Go ahead, David, please.
Um, in general, um, for residential infill housing, is there a definition? A real breakpoint from a major addition or major renovation as compared to infill that's very clearly defined somewhere in the ordinance? And not having the whole thing in front of me, I couldn't look for that myself, but maybe the planner could highlight why, uh, or what is a infill house?
I definitely can. I definitely will find, but it's my understanding, Nick, and correct me if I'm wrong, infill development is when a lot uh, this does not include renovations or additions or remodeling of structures. Infill is when you're rebuilding more than fifty percent of a structure or you're starting from scratch on a lot, you're making it vacant. And you're building, or it's an existing vacant lot in the middle of a built-up neighborhood. That constitutes infill, but we do have a definition in our ordinance, which I would be happy to share.
Okay, yeah.
I can I can read it if you want, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, infill house shall mean a house constructed on a vacant lot or a house constructed to place a demolished house where the homes within two hundred feet on the same side of this block are an average of at least ten years old.
Okay, that's existing.
And then, I mean, one more thing, infill development shall mean demolition and replacement of an existing structure with one or more new structures, splitting of an existing developed lot to create an additional building site. Construction on a vacant lot where the homes within two hundred feet of the same side are ten years old or an addition of five hundred square feet or more to an existing home where the homes within two hundred feet on the same side of the block are an average of ten years. An addition of five hundred feet or demolition replacement.
So these overhang setback requirements would apply to a big addition?
Yes.
Oh, five hundred feet or more, correct?
Yep.
That sounds very clear, thank you. I had a few other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Item number one, it describes the infill house shall not be raised more than twelve inches above the garage, uh, of average grade of the lot. And then it goes on to describe a finished floor can't be thirty six inches above the average grade. And, and I thought about it a couple of different ways and I, I remain confused on the limit of twelve inches above grade that a basement wall could be and then the mat or the, the floor could be thirty six inches, there's a gap there that I don't understand.
I might be able to help on that, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
So I was out, it's funny that, it's a good question, I was out with, um, uh, building's, uh, official, I'm sorry, Ranny McClure, on the home we were talking about earlier on Oak. Because it appears that their basement wall is higher than twelve inches from the average grade. So what, what they require, Mr. Gassen, is the surveyor has to go shoot the grade of the first floor of the homes on either side, draw that line, and then the basement wall where the, where these, um, supports sit on can be twelve inches, but then a lot of these, you go up three or four steps higher than the basement wall. And then that's where they set the first floor inside the building. No one can see it, but the ordinance dictates that it can't be that much, it can be that much higher than the actual basement floor. A lot of these people are ra, appears to be raising them up higher to get these deeper basements. And, and the key is how do you calculate the average grade? So if a lot's on an angle, higher in the back, lower in the rear, the building inspector has to go out there and average that grade. So it, it is, it's very weirdly written, but when you're out in the field and you can see the wall versus where the actual first floor is, some people come in and step down to their lanai's inside the home, some people go up a few steps. They didn't want any more than a difference between those two. Very strangely written, but out in the field, it seems to make sense.
I also want to make a clarification that the only amendments being considered or changed at this time or whatever you see in blue on the screen. Um, all of the language that is seen in black is part of the existing ordinance that has been there since the original infill ordinance was adopted and we have not changed it, so any of the existing regulations need to be discussed. Um, may I suggest that we pick that up as a separate topic because, uh, the eagles windows, the patios and the garages, overhangs and encroachments, those are the only things being addressed in this. And if we could move this along, any other concerns that are, any of the other text that's in black over here, that's all existing ordinance, we haven't even discussed it. What is there?
Mr. Chairman, might I suggest for Mr. Gassen, I, I think it's a good point, maybe a graphic, even though we're not changing that, another graphic that Ranny could get us to put in that section to show the twelve inches, now you get another twelve inches inside the building, maybe we can do a graphic.
Nick, there is already a graphic in section two one one seven, I can pull that graphic also back into this one so that you can see it over here.
Okay, oh, yep, I see it, you're right, it's in there, average grade, first floor, it's already in the ordinance, you're right.
You know, the average layman doesn't get into this ordinance very often, perhaps when they're building a house or like the gentleman tonight when something's been built nearby and so in, in that regard, I would encourage really succinct graphics for all of these things.
Yeah, Vidya is right, there is a graphic that shows exactly that on article twenty one sixteen.
I, I will fill in all the graphics from other parts of the ordinance and whatever doesn't have graphics, I will have our graphic designer draw up so that this ordinance is easy to read.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I have two other things, Mr. Chairman, on that same item. Um, it refers, to refer as determined by the building inspector and Nick gave a few examples there. And I'm, I'm a little leery of that sort of requirement that leaves a lot of judgment to after the fact. And I think some of these things, you know, time, money and so forth spent on a home and then the inspector may determine it not compliant. I think there needs to be much clearer information on what's going to be approved or how it's approved before they start, meaning it needs to be stated in that ordinance. I, I don't know how you do that, but I'm just a little leery of as determined by the building inspector, not judging the inspector at all, just a matter of the possible inconsistencies there. Um, so if that can be looked at and worked in another way, or maybe the graphic helps illustrate that, that'd be great. One other item, if I can continue, in item five, um, I think maybe an adjustment in language should be considered. It says architectural building features supported by continuous foundation shall not project and that's very defining. But what if a building feature not on continuous foundation were to project more than, to a side yard? I would almost say scratch the continuous foundation to say architectural building features shall not project. Because you could have a pretty good projection on post, um, which there are many examples around town that I see. Um, not that they're objectionable, I just see that as an example of how things are dealt with.
I think comment five is clarified in comment seven, it separates out architectural building features supported by a continuous foundation versus those that are cantilevered, which means they don't have a continuous foundation, but they project off the face of the wall. Uh, the language is written to make a distinction between the two, if you take out continuous foundation.
Yeah, but the, my point is there's, there's a middle option, a continuous foundation is one thing, cantilever is another thing, but a post-supported projection is totally another thing, which isn't really addressed here.
Should, I can add that in?
I, I just think it's a potential for something to crop up later that's not outlined here. Maybe it, maybe it's not by eliminating the continuous foundation, maybe it's post foundations well, it needs to be covered somehow, I believe.
Okay. I, I'll find the language to make sure that that is so.
Vidya, this is Commissioner King, I, I don't really understand number five, what it, what this is trying to, to cover.
So basically what it's saying is you can have a bay window projecting into the side yard by eighteen inches, but that bay window cannot go all the way to the ground, so you still have the clearance from the ground. The foundation still needs a five foot setback and then you can have an eighteen inch projection that is not anchored straight to the ground. Uh, when I have the illustrations on there, I think it would be a lot clearer, I can see why illustrations might be really helpful for this. Because that will definitely make it very clear what this is trying to do.
That helps, Eric.
Yeah, I mean, a little bit, I know, I know what a, so, I mean, that would be saying like your basement's going to go, you know, it's going to go against your setbacks, I guess. Uh, the required yard, is that the five yard, like the five foot setback on the side?
Yes, that is the five side yard.
Okay, so I guess I, it just doesn't make sense why it's needed because it obviously would eliminate the setback.
I, I'm not following, what would eliminate?
I, I just don't know why number five is even needed because you'd be encroaching on the setback, you wouldn't be meeting your setbacks.
Well, it's number five number five is providing the clarification that you cannot project because right now we do have plans that come in which actually show a projection, they say since it is only an isolated projection from the sidewall, it is punishable. This is trying to clarify the ordinance to say that no, it cannot just project out because then your setback is measured from the projection to the property line. Maybe if I provide illustrations, might, if I take this out, it opens up a loophole that is open to interpretation, somebody can come in here arguing saying, well, you're not exactly saying that it cannot project. So this is basically saying if you have a post support or it is on a continuous foundation, you cannot stick out to any required, yeah.
Okay, should say any required setbacks?
Required yard automatically means required setback. Required, the word required means the five feet or in case of front yard, twenty five feet, case of rear yard, thirty or whatever, please don't the word required means whatever the setback is.
I asked Vidya to add side yard, front yard, rear yard before that word yard so that no one is mistaken what that means.
Okay.
Well, I think like you said, Vidya, the illustrations are going to help all of us.
Yes, definitely.
This, I think this is a great, a great leap tonight, this helps clarify all of this discussion that we've had, it puts it down into typical ordinance form, so I think we look forward to seeing your next step. I know, I think you want to schedule this for a public hearing?
Yes, please.
Um, I think you can make all those final changes and
Yes, if you would just schedule it for the next available meeting, I will have graphics put on it from tomorrow, so I will try and give it to Sienna if not for the next meeting, the meeting after that.
So the first meeting in November possibly?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, are you okay with that pace?
This is Christian Hauser, I have no issues with that timeframe.
Eric, any comment on that?
No, I, I, I don't have an issue with that timeframe, I think my comments have generally been, um, uh, brought up by the other, other commissioners, the only other, I guess not to pile on, uh, number five, but, but I, I was also confused by the language, trying to understand what we're trying to accomplish with it, um, and the, what I was hung up on was the architectural building features supported by a continuous foundation, because in my mind, the whole building's supported by a continuous foundation, so I was trying to understand really what, what we were trying to drive that, so the language I think could use some massaging and certainly some illustration would, would help as well.
Vidya, Chairman, this is David Gassen. Uh, in response to your, but I, I'm fine with where we are for my own satisfaction with the exception, I might, um, I'm going to go back and revisit the twenty, twenty one oh two as they kind of reference to each other. And so I'm just reserve an idea that maybe something in that review will bring up another question for me, other than that, I'm okay.
Okay, Dean?
Yeah, I, I guess I was trying to get to, um, in my own mind, we're, we're trying to eliminate uh, in part, uh, digging into the, the, uh, the setback on a side yard. Um, that, that's why this foundation discussion is happening versus allowing it if it's, if it's, um, above ground or overhanging. Is that, is that correct? Am I making the right assumption there?
Yes, I think the ordinance, the way it is currently written is probably it, it is understood by Nick and the building official and planners, but when a builder looks at it, they're always going to look at it from the angle of what is the best we can get out of there and the way the language is currently written, it is subject to interpretation, it's not a tightly written language. So we are just trying to tighten it up and I think once illustrations are added and I will clarify the language in subsection five so that it's clear with no ambiguity. And Mr. Gassen, if you have any comments between now and the next meeting, please feel free to email it to me, I will try and address it because I want to get as complete an amendment before you for the public hearing as possible.
We'll definitely do that.
So thank you all, so I don't think we need to set this, unless you want, you want us to do that, set it for first meeting in November?
No, just set it at the next available agenda, if you could do that, that would be helpful.
Okay. Motion for that.
So moved.
Been moved, we have support.
Support.
Been moved and supported, that, uh, we set this for a public hearing at the next available agenda, be determined by the administration. Uh, do we have the roll call, please?
I, I think I got the mover and supporter of Gassen?
Yeah.
Dixon?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Vavakwa?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you, Vidya, that was helpful. Uh, number seven miscellaneous, um, do we have any miscellaneous items from the commissioners? Okay, uh, number eight is public comment again, Sienna, any late arrivals, any, anybody on hold, anyone send any emails in?
No, I actually have a miscellaneous item though.
Uh, is that in the upcoming agenda?
No.
Okay, go right ahead.
Um, I recently sent an email to all of you, I wondered if any of you were attending the Michigan Association, uh, annual virtual conference, it is from Wednesday to Friday. Um, Patty is the only one that reached out to me and stated that she will be attending, uh, but I definitely wanted to ask if you guys were planning on attending so I can handle your registration, it is virtual, obviously. Um, and I can sign you guys up if any of you are interested or if not, that's fine. Um, I just wanted to reiterate because it does start on Wednesday, it's from Wednesday to Friday, however, you still have the, uh, option to log on when you, whenever you want to, so you can look at the recorded sessions and view them, so you're not really being taken
We have an email from you, if I recall, late last week that discusses this, so anyone interested in going, look up that email and then communicate with Sienna if you would.
Thank you.
Number eight, uh, upcoming agenda, Sienna.
Oh, lucky me, uh, so we have the public hearing on October twenty second for the request Par pharmaceutical to reconstruct a modular storage facility adjacent to the sixteen warehouse for cold storage at their campus located, uh, located at eight seventy Parkdale. At the last meeting, Nick, um, shared the information that he was privy to by Par, uh, Par Pharmaceuticals. So I did get the public hearing notice in the paper in addition to mailing that to everyone within the three hundred feet. Very good. We also have the, um, the public hearing, which I can erase that, we probably won't have that. Um, we'll wait till Vidya updates the infill housing, um, development ordinance. And also on that agenda, we have the consideration of a site plan to renovate the existing US School Center, add a drive up ATM and relocate the current branch activities um, at Chief Financial Credit Union in their administration building located at five fifteen South Rochester Road.
Very good, any questions for Sienna?
Uh, we also possibly, um, I'll defer to Vidya, we'll see, uh, it may be the rezoning request or, um, for, I think it's for thirty three Wesley.
Forty three Wesley? I was about to say.
Agenda as well.
What is it?
Uh, a rezoning request.
For which property?
Four four three Wesley.
And what is, uh, where are they heading?
Yeah. Zoned, uh, multiple family residential, they wanted rezoned to office.
To what?
Office.
Office, okay, very good, very good. Okay, thank you. Any other business, ladies and gentlemen? Thank you again and, uh, we'll see you in two weeks. Uh, we do not know if it will be virtual or real, but in any event, uh, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry about that phone ringing.